Hi, my name is John De Ville with RedForRedNC.com. And I want to talk to you today about county commissioner meetings in North Carolina, using them as an advocacy tool and the kind of information, the kind of messages we need to be talking about at county commission meetings, kind of information, the kind of ask that we need to be making at county commission meetings. So first of all, let's talk about why on earth would we want to talk with anybody on the county commission? Why would we want to talk at a county commission meeting? And the first thing is to understand that county commissioners in North Carolina are responsible for the brick and mortar at the very minimum. And I'm going to talk a little bit more later in the video about where the lines start and stop in terms of responsibility for funding public schools in North Carolina, but broadly speaking, as this slide right here indicates, the state has the responsibility for providing North Carolina schools with personnel, with putting the teachers, the teacher assistants, the building principals, the school counselors, the nurses into the buildings. And broadly speaking, the counties have the responsibility to provide the funds, to provide the brick and mortar, the actual buildings, the heating, anything that has to do with the physical plant, that falls squarely on the shoulders of the county commissioners now and the county taxpayers. Now again, those lines are blurry and we'll get back to the blurriness of those lines in a little bit later in the video. First of all, why would you want to speak at a county commission meeting? What advantage does a public education advocate have to go to a county commission meeting, either be on the agenda, form a part of the agenda, or speak during public comments? And one good reason to do that is that you've got a ready-made microphone there. I don't mean just a physical microphone, but it's a platform. It is a platform to share your ideas, share your concerns, not just with county government, but with the other leaders who might be in the room and more importantly, the media outlets that are there. You've got local papers, you've got local radio stations, and in a larger market, you're going to have television coverage of the meeting. And so it is a platform, it's a stage if you will, that you, a public education advocate can utilize to amplify the message, to amplify the signal, to get our concerns out, to get our ask out to a broader part of the community, to drum up community attention to issues that we think are vital to public education in our state and in our particular counties. Another reason that you might want to go to a county commission meeting is that you can possibly create a coalition. Now, what kind of coalitions might you be able to generate at a county commission meeting? First of all, hopefully the county commissioners are going to be on your side. If not, before you get there, maybe after you show up and you explain what the situation is that you're facing, that our other teachers, teacher assistants, principals, counselors are facing in their buildings, then hopefully the county commissioners are more empathetic, more understanding of the concerns and the needs that we have in our classrooms. So that's one possible coalition. Going back to the first point on using a county commission meeting as a platform, as a stage, you can use the meeting, you can use that platform to hopefully through the media outlets, attract like-minded individuals, like-minded teachers, like-minded parents, business leaders, any other particular group that might see overlap with the interest of public education being something that intersects with their interest. And so, once you've gone to the meeting and once that meeting has had some coverage and maybe your remarks got in the paper, got covered on a radio station, were broadcast on television, now maybe we have a broader coalition and networking and organization building is always going to be advantageous to us. So again, two coalitions that are possible going into a county commission meeting. Coalitions, tighter networking with the elected officials in our county and then citizen groups, parents, other teachers who are outside the room on the night of the meeting. Another reason to go to a county commission meeting and to speak is that hopefully we can leverage county commissions and county commissioners as proxy lobbyists for the general assembly. And I'm using that concept of proxy lobbyist with one specific goal. And again, and we talked about this later in the video, it's no surprise, it's nothing new to anybody who's been working as a public educator in North Carolina for any length of time, that the state contribution to our classrooms has been on the decline. The only way that I think that we can reverse that, short of changing who is sitting in the general assembly or changing the minds of the people who are sitting in general assembly, is to look for other potential advocates for us. Somebody who is outside the profession and also maybe outside the arena of being a parent or just a average concerned citizen. County commissioners have connections through their party affiliations, through the North Carolina County Commission Association. They have opportunities to sit down with members of the general assembly. And if we on a consistent basis politely, clearly, coherently make our case about why we need more funding, per pupil funding in our North Carolina classrooms, if we make that case clearly, then we have the opportunity to basically flip the county commissioner into a de facto lobbyist, an advocate for public education to the general assembly members who maybe we can't quite make our case loud enough, it won't penetrate as well. But if a county commissioner is making that case, then possibly that's an avenue to have greater influence on the members of the general assembly. So that's another reason to engage in this type of advocacy work. Why not speak at a county commission meeting? So after giving you a few reasons as to why to do it, why might you not want to go and do it? Well, you don't want to do it too much. You might, if you are, you show up at every meeting or you show up at every other meeting. If your comments go on long, or if you're showing up with a large group of people, other teachers and/or parents to speak to the commissioners, you are slowly but surely, you're going to wear out your welcome. They are not going to listen to you. They will nod, they will allow you to speak as part of the courtesy that they extend for public comments, but actually engage you thoughtfully, reflect on what you're having to say. You're going to encounter the law of diminishing returns if you repeatedly show up. And the same is going to hold true of the media. If you go once a year, twice a year, you've got an opportunity to make a splash with the media, to really make an impact. You're something new. But if you're the same old, same old, well, by definition, you're not news anymore. And the chance of your message being covered is going to be reduced tremendously. A second reason to possibly not go is the sentiment that you will encounter that more funding for public schools is quote-unquote "not the responsibility of the county", it's not the responsibility of county taxpayers. And if you look at Black Letter Law, that's probably true. Again, the state is responsible for putting the teachers in the classroom. It's not up to the counties according to statute to put people into the classroom. And again, there's fuzziness there, but you are going to encounter that. If you're basically going to ask for more teachers, more teacher assistants, school supplies, textbooks, that sort of thing, at a certain point, you are probably going to get pushback from the commissioners because ultimately, you're probably in an indirect way or possibly directly, you're asking for a millage increase and elected officials historically are low to increase taxes. And thirdly, and this ties with really the first two points, if you show up on a regular basis and you wear out your welcome, then you are going to be in a position where the commissioners are just not as persuadable as if you showed up maybe once or twice a year. So things, a couple of reasons right there, a few reasons to think about. A second set of reasons as to possibly not speaking or not going to the county commissioners and asking them for more funding in our school systems is this. If we continue to rely upon local sources for personnel needs, for teachers, for teacher assistants, for textbooks, for school supplies, that's going to lead to, more than likely, that's going to lead to greater inequality in our North Carolina classrooms. In other words, school systems, counties, districts that have a more substantial, more robust tax base, have the capacity to increase their millage rate, have the property values to where they could go up a penny or two and raise several hundred thousand dollars or several million dollars. Those counties might actually listen to us and may put more money into the school systems. And that's a good thing for a particular county. But if we push that dynamic down the road and we extend it long-term, where do we end up in North Carolina? We are going to inevitably end up in a situation where we will have counties and districts that are well-funded and have got fantastic services, and we're going to have counties and districts that are not well-funded. We will have a state, we will be a state of haves and have nots when it comes to public education. We're already in that situation in many respects. If we continue to rely upon local sources of funding, that dynamic is only going to get worse. And there's a second part that's related to that. If, and you will hear a lot of county commissioners make this point, they see extra funding, very often they will see extra funding as an enabling activity. In other words, if the counties start to pick up what they believe, correctly believe, I think, that the state should be picking up the tab for personnel, for supplies, for professional development, for textbooks. If the counties continue to pick up an increasing share of that, then they are in a sense enabling the lack of funding, the lack of action on the part of the state. And in any type of dysfunctional behavior, enabling that dysfunctional behavior is to condone it. It is to engage in a behavior that is only going to make it worse over the long term. So again, another reason to not speak is to ironically, we may end up making things better for our own county, but make things worse across the state. Food for thought there. Now I want to come back to this slide again that I showed you earlier in the video and the differences between, you know, what, where the state responsibility is and the county responsibility. And this slide I think is somewhat misleading because there is a solid black line in between the state responsibility for personnel and the county responsibility for brick and mortar to maintain the physical plan. In reality, that's not really the case. In reality, the lines are blurred. Where does exactly the responsibility on the part of the state stop and start? And where exactly does the responsibility for the county when it comes to personnel, when it comes to supplies, when it comes to textbooks, where exactly does that start and stop? And we're in this position right now, and I think it's gotten worse over the past seven years, but it's a long term. You can go back as late as 1958 and you can find local lawmakers and state lawmakers going at each other as to who is responsible for what. So the line has always been blurry between state and county responsibility. Maybe we need sharper statutory language, maybe we could just go back to 2008, maybe we could go back to 1995 or earlier when the state picked up a bigger share of the pie and maybe we wouldn't have concerns, we wouldn't have this debate as to where county and state responsibility start and stop. Now, what does it actually say in statute? So let's take a look at that. And I'll just read the first part to you here. The local current expense, which is frequently called at the county level, it's called the current operating expense. The current, local current expense fund shall include appropriations sufficient when added to appropriations from the state public school fund. So there you see the partnership, the overlap between state and local. The local current expense shall include appropriations sufficient when added to appropriations from the state public school fund for the current operating expense of the public school system in conformity with the educational goals and the policies of the state and the local board of education. So those goals and the policies, that's a partnership. It's not just the goals of the state and it's not just the goals of a particular county or district. It's a marriage of the two. And then highlighted here in red, within the financial resources and consistent with the fiscal policies of the board of county commissioners. So the philosophy, the philosophy of funding is a marriage between state and county. And as the philosophy of funding is a marriage, so too are the actual resources. Now again, the reason I'm pointing all this out is that it's not clearly defined. And this is an argument that has been going on for some time. Let's take a look at what the trends have been in the last several years. Let's take a look at how the part of the pie that comes from Raleigh to the counties has diminished. If we go all the way back to the mid-'70s, it was well over 50% in terms of the part of the pie that came from Raleigh down to the K-12 public education structured at the county level, at the district level. We are now, 2017, 2018, we're hovering around 39%. That's a substantial drop in funding. And the only way that we make up for that is going to be the county kicking in the extra cash. Taking a look at this chart right here, I think this is a lot more telling than the previous chart. This shows in inflation-adjusted dollars, per pupil funds coming from Raleigh to our counties to operate our schools. And you'll see that the high watermark was 2007, 2008, at $6,300 per pupil. And we are dropped down 2016, 2017 to $5,600. So that's a drop right there of about 10% in per pupil funding. So there's two consequences of this trend. One is that simply we are, have larger classes, we have either fewer textbooks, fewer class supplies, larger class sizes, fewer teacher assistants, all the things that we're experiencing. Or the county kicks in to make up that difference. Or what's happened probably in the majority of the counties in North Carolina is that we have, the counties have kicked in some money. We haven't lost everything that we had in 2008, but we have lost a lot of what we had in 2008. The counties have only been able to partially mitigate that cut from the state. We're coming to a close here and I think that this slide might be in some ways the most important slide in the entire presentation because this is how I believe we are playing the game of funding in North Carolina right now. We are playing a high stakes game of chicken. We've got in one car, the general assembly, which has been ratcheting down their contribution to school systems across the state, which puts pressure then on the other player in the game, the county commissions. You've got two cars on a country highway, on a straight stretch, late at night, headed down each other at 100 miles an hour. And in between the two of them, we have the children in North Carolina public schools. The general assembly has been cutting funding, hoping, praying, maybe not even caring whether or not the county commissions kick in the shortfall to make up for the difference in the funding gaps compared to 2008 prior to the Great Recession. The county commissions are torn. Should they could kick in the money? Should they take care of their local flock? Or do they see that as enabling? Do they hold back? Do they hope maybe the next session, next budget cycle, the general assembly finally comes to its senses? We know what happens if both cars don't swerve. They crash. And if they do that, our children will lose. If the general assembly holds fast and the county commissioners don't kick in, the county commissioners swerve, then again, our children will lose. If the general assembly continues down the road and the county commission decides to swerve but kick in the money, a particular district might win, but the other districts will start to suffer. We have got to get the county commissioners and the general assembly to come together and stop this high stakes game of chicken. So again, it goes back to the original reason, one of the key reasons, to go to county commissioners and to try to get them to put pressure on the general assembly and to work with us, to get the county commissioners to work in partnership with teachers, to work in partnership with parents, to work in partnership with local businesses, with local media, and collectively put pressure on the general assembly to restore funding to our public school classrooms at pre-recession levels or greater. Otherwise, the kids, as you see here in this slide, who are caught in the middle, well, our kids are going to lose. And they're never going to really make up the damage that's done to them in this high stakes game of chicken that's been going on for the past seven years at least. I briefly want to talk about a House bill, 514. And more than likely, by the time you're watching this video, 514 will become law. 514 is the brainchild of Representative Brawley out of the greater Charlotte area. This bill is designed to allow municipalities, particular municipalities, Matthews-Mennhill, to set up their own charter schools. And the state would give Matthews and Mannhill taxing authority. They would be able to tax their citizens through property taxes, sufficient funds to pay for their own charter schools. Now, why would they want to do that? Well, a lot of the parents in Matthews and Mannhill look at Charlotte Mecklenburg School Systems and they find them lacking. Or perhaps, they would like to return to the days of a pre-Brown versus Board of Education, where our schools are segregated. I'll leave it to you to decide what the motives are. But in any event, 514 allows for Matthews-Mennhill to effectively secede from Charlotte Mecklenburg School System and have their own funding authority. Now, what's the consequences for Charlotte Meck? What are the consequences for the people in Matthews and Mannhill? And what are the consequences for this bill for folks across the state, for students across the state, for teachers across the state? If this becomes the precedent-setting bill that many of us are concerned that it is going to be, this will create, this will accelerate the dynamic that has already been in place of the state of North Carolina, the general assembly putting more and more pressure on counties and school districts to raise their own funds, to become self-sufficient more and more for educational services, for educational offerings in their respective districts. So while state taxes might go down a little bit, you're going to see, I think, two different types of stories play out in North Carolina. Some districts like Matthews and Mannhill will raise property taxes fairly high and they will have great schools. And then you will have other counties, other districts, that either A, don't have the resources enable, to be able to have fantastic schools for their children, or B, they just decide that they don't want to do it and they have lousy schools. In any event, 514 is almost guaranteed to create a state of have and have nots when it comes to public education. And if passed as prologue, 514 will accelerate the resegregation trends that we have certainly seen in Charlotte and we are seeing across the state with the lifting of the cap on the charter schools, which the general assembly did around 2011, 2012. So if 514 is law by the time you're watching this, it's still, there's still time to go to the county commissioners. There's still time to go to the general assembly to put pressure on them to limit this law, to reverse it, to do something to stem this tide. Speaking of 514 and all things concerning public education in North Carolina, I want to give a shout out to my buddy Stu Egan. Stu is an AP English teacher in Forsyth County. And Stu is a, he's the number one blogger for public education in North Carolina, let's just make it clear. I've often kidded Stu that he was a white collar criminal prosecutor in a former life. The guy is a mad genius when it comes to research, pulling the research together and getting it up on his webpage in a matter of hours. From the moment that somebody makes some sort of stupid comment or engages in some sort of questionable behavior when it comes to policy that impacts the public school classroom in North Carolina, you can count on Stu in a matter of hours to get a post up about it on his website. And it's not going to be some sort of shallow post that just talks about how horrible the decision was, how bad the policy is. You're going to see the statistics, you're going to see the citations, you're going to see the history. So on HP514, on all the things that are impacting public education in North Carolina in general, I strongly recommend that you bookmark CaffeinatedRage.com and follow Stu on a regular basis. What can you do today? What can you do this week? What can you do this month with county commissioners, with the county commission meeting? And I'd like to recommend to you what I consider a fantastic starter activity and it might end up being the most important thing that you will ever do with a county commission. And that is to approach your county commissioners with a resolution. And I've given you a sample resolution at the address that you see here on your screen. And you can take it and you can adapt it for your own county. Now, I've used these resolutions in my county here in Macon. I've had fantastic success with them at the school board level. I've not had great success with them at the county commission level. But I still think that they're an effective tool because it generates a lot of media interest. It generates a lot of really positive, I think worthwhile, conversation. This resolution is basically the county commissioners of your county. You would go to them and you're asking your county commissioners to adopt this resolution. And what does it say? It's asking the general assembly to restore per pupil funding in North Carolina public schools to at the very least, pre-recession 2008 levels. I've done this with a lot of statistics. I've taken the statistics out for the purposes of the resolution I'm sharing. Now, why am I doing that? If you have a long list of statistics in your resolution, then you're going to end up in a fight as to whether or not that statistic is accurate enough. If you leave it relatively vague, hey, dear general assembly, we, the commissioners of Stokes County, Surrey County, Ash County, Graham County, Jackson County, Onslow County, we implore the general assembly to restore public education funding to 2008 levels. That's a simple ask, it's clear, and it's a simple philosophical position that the county commissioners can take. I have a vision that if county commissions across the state would take this stand, I believe that that would bring significant pressure to bear on the general assembly. If this becomes a way of activity, this will generate a lot of media interest. So I encourage you to think about doing this. Take a look at the resolution. Before I totally close, I want to encourage you to visit our website, RedForRedNC.com. Check in with us, keep up with us. There's a lot of new content going up weekly. We'll have a declaration of educational vision slated to come out July 4th. We'll have later statements at the beginning of the school year. So I encourage you, go check in, sign up, find us on Facebook, follow us on Facebook, keep up. You're looking at some of the top teacher leaders, people who've been working in this space collectively over 100 years. If you take the nine or 10 folks on the advisory board, we have well over 100 years among us working in this space of public education advocacy. And finally, doing this, if you're a first-timer, can be daunting, it can be intimidating. And there's only so much I can cram in what's already been a far too long of a video. So if you would like some assistance, if you would like some online, by phone mentoring, walk you through these steps, listen to what your concerns are, give you suggestions, serve as a sounding board. I am more than happy to do this for you. You can find me at JayDeVille@gmail.com. And we can start right there. You can find me on Facebook. But we can correspond either via email or I'm happy to talk with you on the phone and walk you through the process, to walk you through your first steps doing advocacy work with county commissioners. I think it's a powerful tool. There's certainly some drawbacks to it, but I can walk you through that. There are certainly some drawbacks to it, but I can walk you through that. And I think if we do this across the state, I think we can make a difference for our students in the classroom. And that's the reason you're watching the video, and that's the reason I made it. Good luck to you. I hope you have a great summer. If it's in the fall, I hope you have a fantastic school year. I'll see you in the next video.